The first item for the agenda is, let's all just say, welcome back, everybody. We've all had a great summer, hopefully, and we're looking forward to an excellent year.
Mistake, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Our first item is the approval of items by consensus.
We have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Approval of the minutes of June 12th regular session and June 12th executive session. Approval of out-of-state field trips, Costa Rica trip for the high school Spanish students, and middle school New York grade eight trip. Please announce the donation from the Sons of Italy for sports uniforms. The amount that you will be accepting this evening is 20,000. They are additionally going to purchase two more sets of uniforms that will come back for you fall for the fall. Where they did, boys and girls track, ice hockey, boys and girls lacrosse and baseball. And we're extremely grateful to the Wilmington Sons of Italy. They've been more than generous over the years with helping out the athletic department. They have volunteered to purchase, which we'll bring before you with the amount, the new scoreboard for the high school football field, so. And lastly, warrants payroll, six five, six nineteen, seven three, seven seventeen, eight fourteen, FS twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and one, sped twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, circuit breaker twenty-one and twenty-two, G grants four twenty-six, four twenty-seven, four twenty-eight, four twenty-nine, four hundred, revolver to count two thirty-six, two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, two thirty-nine, two forty, two oh-one, and L thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and one. I recommend favorable motion on all.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. We'll go back first, the approval of the minutes of June 12th, 2013, regular session, executive session. Those minutes reflect the school committee allotting a raise of 3.50 percent to the superintendent for this following school year, for this upcoming school year. The out-of-state field trip and the donations for the Sons of Italy, and those minutes, we'll all vote, we'll vote on those first as one group. Okay? So do we have a motion for items one, two, and three? Oh.
Someone.
Do we have a second? Dr. Quick. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. The warrants, okay. The G warrants, the GR and L warrants, everyone can vote on that, so I'll entertain motion for the GR and L warrants. Mr. Mullis.
Motion to approve the GR and L warrants as listed.
And do we have a second? Mrs. Burns. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, good. Now we'll go back up to the payroll warrant. All those in favor of the payroll warrant?
Motion.
Motion, oh, a motion, yeah. Mrs.
Motion to prove the payroll warrant as listed.
Okay, and we have a second? Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? One, two, three, oh, no, not you.
Sorry.
Sorry, five in favor, two abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Okay. The food service warrant. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Bonish.
I make a motion to approve the food service warrants as listed.
And here, do we have a second? Dr. Quick. All those in favor? Six in favor, one abstain, Mrs. Carroll. And then the sped and the circuit breaker warrants. Dr. Quick.
Motion to prove the sped and circuit breaker warrants as listed.
And do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll, okay. All those in favor? That one's six to one, Mrs. Burns abstains. I think we might have found a good way to do it. Okay, thank you. Our next item of business would be the superintendent's report.
We have a long superintendent's report. This evening, we've had a very busy summer, and I just want to say we've had a wonderful opening of school. It went very, very smoothly. The buses were on time. We thank Sharon Dennett, the bus company. Today, I welcomed the parents and guardians of the class of 2026, our kindergarten students who will graduate in 2026. They had their little bus ride and visited their classrooms. Kindergarten will be starting next Tuesday. The, last week, all administrators and a group of teacher leaders had a two-day workshop on the new evaluation system that went very well. We will be training all staff on the September 20th, full-day professional development on the first steps, which is self-assessment and SMART goals. And then I will be bringing my SMART goals back to the school committee, and we will be moving forward in the process of the new evaluation system. It's a, it's going to, going to be a work in progress, but we will get there. The other piece that is a major goal is the adoption of the Common Core, but fortunately, we're ahead of the game on that. We've already aligned our math and English Language Arts curriculum, so we're in a better place, and...
With regards to that, is the science, has the science piece been developed yet? I know that the state still hadn't...
No.
Okay.
They had out a draft that they were looking for public comment this, this summer, and we have not heard anymore.
Thank you.
Kudos to the custodians and the maintenance staff. Students and teachers were greeted to nice shiny halls and clean buildings, and minor repairs were done in all the buildings. We're in the process, as you know, from the Capitol warrant, a town meeting of replacing the boiler at the boutwell. We're converting to gas, which is going to be thrilling, so that we don't have to deal with the problems that we had last winter. We have, as you recall, we received a grant from the state to do the north intermediate windows and doors, and although we will not be doing the work till the summer, that process has started because we have to go through design and development. And we have met with the two teams, scale associates, and are working through that. George Hubert from the town is working with us, so that will be exciting for the north Again, as required by law, the superintendent is to meet with the representatives from the police fire safety to discuss every year, and we had Mr. Droggero chaired our safety committee, and we met to review all of our changes. Again, something that you approved through the warrant was the addition of swipe cards for, for all the buildings, which will be installed in the next, well, the locks are there, but we need to redo everyone's IDs. This is actually came after Newtown, when we had concerns from parents about side doors of buildings being open. Entrances to all the schools except Shoshine will be strictly by the front door. Because of the location of the parking lot at Shoshine and the entrance, that, that back door will also, also has a camera and a swipe system. CARES programs will have a keypad for parents to type in a code to come pick up their child, so we can try and do a better job of securing the buildings. Kudos to Neil Ellis and his department, because it's a huge project. Also, technology, again, thanks to the voters at town meeting, all of our schools are almost, are all wired for wireless. We will be going wireless at the end of the month, so that's exciting as well. And lastly, it is, the work that we do couldn't possibly get done without the work of the administrative assistants who get everything ready for all of us, and they, they do a tremendous job, so I wanted to acknowledge them. And lastly, central office, Paul and Kate and Mary Hood and Neil Ellis really don't get summer vacations, because that's when a lot of the work goes on. So I think we're off to a really good start. I do want to point out to you, it's not a night for enrollments, but I do want to point out to you that we did have a blip this summer in enrollment, and I've never seen, actually, we haven't seen it 20 years, going back. We had 13 students enroll at the Wildwood during the month of July that we had not planned on, and another four students who came after that. So the class sizes are at 23s, 24s, and 125. The good news is we have full-time aides in all of the classrooms. I don't have a room, a space that I could open up another kindergarten at this time there, and I don't think it would be healthy to transport Wildwood students over to another school. So I think because of the fact that, I feel comfortable with the ratio of one to 12 in the classroom, that we should be okay. But, and it didn't, usually when that happens, it's a new development. It is not, it's just houses on that side of town, so.
It has nothing to do with this, over the bridge?
No, that's on Shoshine, we have, we had, Shoshine and West, we only have four students from that complex, so.
That's a surprise, thank you.
In your packet, the personnel report, we're very busy, we hired over 30 staff members, and they will all be invited to the September 11th meeting to meet all of you. I think you'll be very impressed with the credentials. Kudos to all the CTLs and principals and sped department for the hiring and Kate, for district appointments. It's a very impressive group of new teachers. As required by state, we have to produce a professional development plan that Dr. Berman put together, based on our system goals, which, as you all know, are going to be with the implementation of the new educator evaluation system. So you have that in front of you, and let me list everything that you have, and then you can acknowledge Kate. Next is the professional development handbook, which is probably your widest, wisest investment, because professional development for staff is, is key to increased student learning. The district curriculum accommodation plan, English Language Learner Program Plan, an explanation of district-determined measures, the summer curriculum work that was done. As I said, Kate, do not take a summer vacation.
Wow.
One of the members of this group, Mrs. Burns, came up with a recommendation that I would love to follow through on, and hope that we can, it would be a dream of mine, of us thinking of doing a Dropbox or posting these, so that you're not getting all of these materials if you choose to get it electronically. Yeah, yeah. So I'd like to put that on our future agenda.
Great idea.
I was going to email you tomorrow.
I was feeling guilty, are we going to keep these or send them back?
I think they're great to have a hard copy, but I think for future reference and as we move forward with our different learning curves, I think it is quite helpful.
Definitely, that's great. Does anyone, would anyone like to add to this? Dr. Berman?
I would like to...
We'd like, yes, okay.
With regards to the, the professional development handbook, I have to say, and granted, I compared everything to what we received last year, and along with the plan, I don't want to minimize any other of the aspects that we received, but the clarity and the clarification in the handbooks that, in these handbooks that I received this year was so much easier for my level of knowledge, and I absolutely love the development handbook with all the dates, and it's just clearly spelled out, and I think it's concise and easy to follow through with regards to how it rolls out during the year. And I just, I just want to thank you and commend you for such a wonderful job, and the information with clarification of certain aspects, such as the activities for professional growth, I think those are great additions to it, and I think it's helpful, I'm sure it's, it was helpful to me, I can only imagine what it was, would be like for the staff, so, thank you very much for all your hard work this summer. It's great, definitely evident.
I'd like to say, as a former teacher, kind of echoing what Mrs. Burns said, certainly no one can say they didn't get the information, or they don't know where it is, or what's available to them, and you have the whole year to figure it out. You can look ahead of time, it's not like you're doing it from semester to semester. You've given everybody the knowledge that they need to, to put together a whole year plan for themselves, and I think it's going to be invaluable in the self-assessments that we're starting with, that the teachers should be able to, they can't say, well, we had nowhere to take a course, or how to do, we don't know what to do next. This is so outstanding, and really, a lot of hard work, and we really appreciate it, all the work that you've done. I'm sure the staff appreciates it as well.
I'm sure they do.
And these are all online. We do not print these for the staff, it's all online.
Yeah, oh, okay. Excellent. Yes.
On the handbook, professional development handbook, on the EpiPen to get certified, can anybody in the school system do that? Okay.
In fact, I have, in my notes for the whiteboard tomorrow, you will see.
Oh, good.
I am strongly encouraging that every staff member get the training.
Oh, good.
It's two-part, it's online, and then you set up an appointment with the nurse.
Excellent, excellent. And then, on the Educated Evaluation System training, can, can the school committee go to this training too, or is it just for...
Sure, absolutely. You want to sit there?
Because then at least we know what our staff, our people, you know, our staff is going through and what they're looking for. Okay, great.
Actually, if someone wants to go, they should contact you, Kate, go through to, to know where they should, you might be able to...
Middle school.
It says it all right here.
Oh, okay.
Consult your handbook, Mrs.
I'm teasing.
Here it is.
I read through this whole thing, too. I honestly did. Oh, I need from now on, I'll borrow these from Kathleen, thank you. Thank you. It seems like, it's unfortunate, you've spent so many hours, we should have more to say about this, but...
That's fine.
You've had enough, okay? Thank you so much. So now we're on... All right, our next item of business then would be the new business, and we have both the high school handbook and the middle school handbook.
So could we invite Principal Peters and Assistant Principal Mahoney, start with the high school?
Thank you. And before we start, I would just like to say, on behalf of the school committee, it's very nice to have you in that seat, Mrs. Peters. Thank you.
I'm very happy to be here.
Good, good, thank you for coming. Okay, Ms. Mahoney?
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back, it's good to start another school year, and I think we had a pretty amazing summer with our transitions, new leadership, new team, so we are very excited to get things rolling in the last few days. Everybody should have a copy, colored copy of the handbook, and we'll go through page by page. There are some minor adjustments and some changes as well. Page one, we adjusted the names for the new school committee members in some new positions, we also included Ms. Peters' name. Page two, please stop me if you have any questions or clarifications. Page two, we just adjusted the, the school year, same as page four, just some small minor changes of school year, as nothing was changing there. Page six, just adjusted the transportation for the bicycles, not too many students ride their bike. I ride my bike to school from time to time, I plan on doing it tomorrow. Students are able to use the front of the building or side doors, but there's no longer a spot in front of the gymnasium, so that's what we adjusted. Also welcome to use my office if they'd like, if I'm not using my personal bike rack. Page eight, we also made some adjustments for the new building as we're under construction. We changed some of the wording for where students are able to pick up their parking pass, or enter into the lottery if they're juniors for a parking spot. That is done by our school resource officer, and it's located in the guidance office. Students are also, we're just reminding them not to park at the Baptist Church or the Wilmington Public Library, to make that clear. Typically is clear, but our students sometimes are in a rush, and sometimes there's not enough spots, and they, they try to park the car where they're able to park the car. So it's just a gentle reminder. We also adjusted the number of parking spaces, because there is no longer a faculty parking lot, there are, there are spots for students and numbered spots for our faculty members, so the number has been adjusted down to reflect the 171 available spots for students.
Excuse me, I just want to confirm that all seniors who wanted a parking permit receive one.
Yes.
And in fact, I've been over the past two days just to see, and there's plenty of empty spaces, so we're okay.
There are seniors that are, would like to drive, we asked at the carpool, just for going green, but some students are driving themselves, there's enough spots for every senior that wants one. All juniors are entered into the lottery, and their numbers are just pulled randomly when there's a spot available. The numbers become tighter as the juniors get a little older, and there are more students with licenses, but then, of course, in the spring, there's turnover, because the seniors leave early, so then, again, everybody gets a spot.
Did we ever look at the bus situation, where so many of them drive? Do we look to adjusting that, or having one less bus, or is it not feasible?
A number of years ago, we, we talked about that. We did the numbers in the ridership. The ridership does fluctuate because of sports and after-school activities. I don't think, that was more of a committee, not...
Dennis probably doesn't know this, but we, the buses are based on the middle school population, it's not you hire, we have to...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. We have to have that many anyway?
That many buses, and we have cut buses in the past two years.
Oh, good, okay. It just seemed this summer, people were mentioning that they did not see a lot of student heads on those buses coming from the high school.
Now, if you want to change the transportation policy, that would save us a lot of money.
It does fluctuate.
Yeah.
Page 10, we added another consequence of plagiarism. It's infrequent, if it happens in the high school, but it does happen from time to time, so we'd like to make sure that we just remind students how important plagiarism is, that you don't go down that path, you don't take the easy route, and you also don't make the simple mistake of, of not fact-checking. The incident will be reported to faculty advisors of any extracurricular activities in which the student is involved, including the National Honor Society and athletics. We thought that was an important piece for the NHS induction, as well as for coaches to know what's going on in the student's life. There's no, there's no major infraction at that point, but it's good for a coach to know, or an extracurricular activity advisor to know what's going on in the student's life at that time. So, moving forward to page, page 10, sorry, that was page 10.
You have a question?
I do, I'm, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a really, I'm almost embarrassed to ask you. On page nine, under the graduation requirements?
Yes.
Throwing this out to you, and please forgive me, I've got a little Robert Hayes in me. Class of 2013, is that a necessary line? Or is it good for a reference basis to what it was and what it is now, to clarify any maybe misunderstandings of, you know, families who have graduated, seniors, and are now, you know, have other children?
We still have some members of the class of 2013 that are completing credits, that will get there.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry.
And Mrs. Carroll had a question?
Back to saying that if someone gets in trouble, shouldn't that automatically go to athletics and National Honor Society, no matter what trouble they get into?
It hasn't in the past. So are you talking about trouble in regards to plagiarism, or?
Anything.
If a student is suspended in school or out of school, that information is available to the advisors and coaches.
And of course, then they can't do athletics that day anyways, okay.
If it's a detention.
Okay, just to clarify that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That is done through the attendant system.
Great.
It's saying it's reported to the advisor, to students that are involved in athletics and honor society, but does it necessarily mean that they'll be taken off?
No, it does not.
Or suspended from the, for a game, or anything like that?
It does not mean that. We're giving them information, the coaches and advisor will be able to make a determination of what they'd like to do.
Page 13?
Page 13, it's quite a bit of new information. It's just to clean up some misconceptions in our National Honor Society policy that can be found online. It's for parents, so that they understand a little bit, I say, in a clearer fashion of what is expected, what are the exact pieces of information that we're looking at. Anybody care for me to read it, or?
So you're, so you're not saying that it's just making more clarifications?
Yes.
But not necessarily changes?
No, we're not making any dramatic changes, it's just cleaning up some of the language. Correct.
I'm trying to match it to the form that they actually have to complete when they want to join the National Honor Society. They have to complete a form, and there's information on that form that needs to match exactly what's in here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bonish?
I just have a question about the community service, the minimum of 30 hours, is that for one year, or is that over two year?
That's over, that's before their application.
Okay, so before their application, so if they're junior and they make it in, don't, don't they still have to do a community service?
The community service hours for National Honor Society are not good for the community service hours that you need as a graduation requirement.
Okay, that's what I wanted to...
We all, any other questions? Page 14, we added the post-election requirements, just to make sure that the citizenship of our National Honor Society students is always to the highest degree. We also added on page 14, the community service, we're, every year, we talk about community service, and as it's a recently new requirement for graduation, we're going to continue to massage what the expectations are, what some of the loopholes might be, where the shortcomings are, how we can just make it a truly worthy endeavor. We strongly encourage students to view the community service options that are available online. That's in addition, just to make sure that they know exactly where to go. We often find ourselves, the assistant principals are reminding students of, you know, where, where they can go if they don't have any ideas, or we give them options, but our Wildcat Community Service Project, it's found online, is a great place to start. It's a, it's a guaranteed place to get your hours for graduation requirements. We also added sort of an important piece on page 15 to the community service. Students may not perform unpaid labor for a private business. We have found, in a few instances, the students have worked for an uncle, or worked for a parent, essentially an uninsured, unpaid laborer, and it's not a safe activity, it's not, it's not a good activity, and they're working for free for a private business, so they're not enriching the community, they're keeping the overhead costs down for the private business. Most students and parents have understood that when we've told them that their hours are not acceptable, and they've gone back out and figured it out, and we've helped them, we've, a lot of students work in the building. We're always there to support them when we say, you know, this isn't really acceptable. We also put in the fact that we don't want students going to door-to-door. Last year, we had a number of significant snowstorms, and we had students saying that they did 15 hours of door-to-door shoveling. It's also not safe, it's not safe to do that in the community, we don't want students knocking on doors, because it's a graduation requirement, to a total stranger's house, and we also don't want students getting hurt while doing some sort of physical labor. So we, we felt that that was an important piece to add, because those hours are not exactly documentable, we're not sure who the person is who's signing it, in the opposite with the community, the Wildcat Community Service Project, we know everything about the, you know, any cancer walk, or research activity, or community service project that is set up through the town, whether it's the senior center or the library, these are hours that were positive, students are doing, and they're accountable for, and that they're safe, and they're working with trusted advisors. So we wanted to put that piece in there as well.
Can I just comment, and forgive me, because I'm, I'm jumping into this kind of newer to the group. In relation to National Honor Society, I'm assuming that we're getting some direction from the bigger organization, and then we massage that to make it appropriate for our community. Is there ever any exceptions, maybe, for that exceptional student who is active in their community, but let's face it, has to work for pay, because that's how they're paying for college? So they may not have time in their life to meet some of these other requirements.
Unfortunately, National Honor Society is a national organization, I cannot even override a decision. It's in the rules and regulations.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to...
That's one of the problems with it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
No problem. We also wanted to clarify who should be signing off on the community service. Your own parent, or your, your aunt or uncle, really, isn't the best signature to get. Again, just for authenticity and verification, we're just trying to make sure everybody's doing the right thing. And as always, 99% of our students are doing the right thing. We really don't have a major concern, but things come up throughout the last few years that we wanted to continue to chip away at. And in the rare instance that a student might be assigned community service through the assistant principal's office, that community service is not counted towards your graduation, because that is something in lieu of a suspension. because that is something in lieu of a suspension. Page 16. Because we're using the Aspen system now, and we are moving more and more towards paperless, the report cards will be distributed via online, and we wanted to give an exact time when parents could expect the report cards to be posted by the teachers. Teachers through contract have five days after the last day of school. We often have parents asking for, you know, when am I getting this report card? Why hasn't my student gotten a report card yet? Because it's, there is a set timeline, and we just wanted to put that in the handbook for reference.
Do we have a process by which if a student is failing a class, they find out before that five days is up, or are they told beforehand?
The Aspen system allows parents to know exactly what their student is getting at all times, so as long as they're following along, they will, parents will know.
Many of our faculty meetings, we're always just reminding the teachers, the best way to avoid any surprises or any, you know, any issues is to always call. Always just a friendly touch base to say what's going on.
I just have to remind us too, though, to please keep in mind that not everyone does have access to the computers. They really don't. It's hard to believe in here, but I heard more over the summer, different people who, people think we have it, but we don't. So, I think, I know they can go to the library, and I know there's other places, but I think we have to always make sure that there's a second place they can find out. If they don't have access to Aspen, and then you've told us, they can call their teacher and find, there is another way, but we want to remind people of that.
I think that two-way communication is paramount.
Yeah.
Especially when a student is struggling.
Right.
And if a parent wants a report card on paper, we can figure that out as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Quick?
I guess my question is logistical in nature. If you're saying that that, should that be documented then, that if you're saying that we need to be able to offer them an additional way of getting report cards, is that something that needs to be added?
Well, sometimes I think we try, we give the responsibility to the parents, but sometimes I'm wondering if we don't need to do one little added step, but apparently
I guess we do.
you feel comfortable that we are doing that.
We are sending report cards.
I was just going to say, we are sending report cards home. We're not going to.
Oh, in addition to the?
In addition, yes.
Oh, okay.
We're not sending interim reports home, but we are sending report cards home.
All right.
And anybody that does not have access to Aspen, the technology department knows, would know who it is.
Oh, good, okay.
And we will notify them.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Page 16 is just, oh, no. 17.
Page 17 is just a small update to make sure that the lunch prices are reflected correctly.
Can I ask you something without being, not to be rude? Could we just kind of go through and see where some of the larger ones are, and just go through those? Because, yeah, this is.
24.
24. The health records.
These are, the particular, your head lice issue is new language. And health records is also state law.
Page 26, there is a, there is a highlight there. Also, on page 25, there's a, family vacations is just listed as an unexcused absence. It's never necessarily been listed in the handbook, and we want to make sure that it is.
That's a good idea.
And we changed the words on, that students will definitely lose credit, should they accrue a certain amount of unexcused absences, to may lose credit, just to provide the school a little bit more flexibility in extending certain circumstances. Page 26. Students who are tardy due to a doctor's visit or appointment must bring a note dated on that morning from their doctor's office upon arrival to school. We think it's a reasonable request, if a student is going to see a doctor, or coming in late because of a doctor's visit, that they just get something signed from their, you know, a note signed from their doctors. We all routinely go to the doctors, and most of our visits are outside of school time. Anytime you need a note from a doctor, you can get a note, just a brief one from on your way out the door. It's just something for us to document. It helps us with our documentation. State of Massachusetts doesn't always tee eye to eye with school and our need for flexibility, so we'd like to have those on file.
I'd just like to go back for one minute to this quarter. If, all right, the students accumulating four days of unexcused absence in a quarter may lose credit for the quarter? I personally think that's dangerous language, because in my classroom, I may take away the credit, and in Mrs. Carol's classroom, she may not take away the credit, and I think that could lead to issues. So, I just think about that one. That one, I don't like.
Previous language was will lose credit.
I think it should either be we'll lose, or we won't do it at all.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? I don't think we'll lose is too strong, but. I think you've opened this up, it doesn't say who does what. They wouldn't have a lot to stand on.
All right, we'll go back to will.
I don't know if anyone else agrees with that, I don't know.
I think it's some thought, because depending upon what the unexcused
Yes.
absence is, it might not fall into the school criteria, but in some aspect might be, have its legitimate area, and I think that's a very, that either would, I feel comfortable with may only because there are certain, I mean, going on family vacations is not something that
Right.
I, but I don't, there's too many in that realm of what we consider an excuse, and the legitimate of.
I think if a person was assigned from the office to say whether you'd lose it or not, not the individual teacher, I'd feel more secure with that.
I see. I see what you're saying.
I think to leave it open to 80 teachers, you get it, you don't get it, I just feel that if it was like the guidance counselor, or the, I don't know who could give that, or yourself with having a little more work for yourself.
It would be for the administration, which is fine, because the teachers don't have the ability to
Right.
change a credit of a class.
Right. So, I was just going to say, if you want us to add.
Clarify that. Administrator's approval. I think that would be great, that way there'd be no
All right.
question from parents as to who.
And I think the last major change is page 36.
For major changes, yes. For, in terms of suspensions, the eight days to four days, we wanted to boost that up to five days in terms of if they plan on visiting the Blorikhauser Correction Program, we've typically gone from eight days down to four days. We would like to make that into five days for the reduction of the suspension. Four days is difficult, because if it's, you know, nine o'clock in the morning, or 10 o'clock in the morning, basically a student's out for three days, and then they come back by the time it's all said and done. So, we'd like to just keep that as a steady five. We also added page 36 for drug paraphernalia, that the assistant principals or resource officer designate, or any administrator, just is the person who determines what drug paraphernalia is. Whether you can buy it online or not is not important, or buy it at a local store is not important.
And the last one is page 50.
Page 50, we added environmental club and local heroes club in the handbook to reflect.
Those are just the policy. And then the appendices are all updated policies that you approved.
From the school nurse.
From last year. The only one that will change, which was going to be coming before you on September 11th, we have to review the bully intervention plan, and if there are any changes, we need to bring them before the committee, and if you read your school committee notes, there was a change in law this summer, and there's been an addition to students, to adults are added in as part of, as part of the policy. So, we will need to bring that back to the next committee. I don't know whether Mrs. Bonner wants to meet on it. It's a state law, we can't change it before it comes before the whole group. Or should I just send it out to you?
Yes.
Okay. So, that will happen in all handbooks. And we also have to have a public hearing on the, so Ms. McMiniman is reconvening the committee, and will present a report and any recommendations for changes. Thank you, Dennis.
You're on that committee.
Okay.
And Kathleen, you both got, you should have got notifications.
I have email.
Oh, oh, okay. You will be getting notifications.
I do have a few questions. Harassment, isn't that under the bullying? Shouldn't that be under bullying?
Two separate laws.
Two separate laws? Okay, thank you. And the bomb threat, how come the first offense and the second offense is the exact same thing? Shouldn't there be a little bit more to the second offense? They are costing us a lot of money when they do that. I think there should be a third, fourth, and fifth, or it should be, you know, something a little bit more.
It's an excellent question.
Yeah.
Certainly it predates me, and usually if there's a bomb threat.
I guess I live with a bomb tech.
Okay. The expulsion hearing becomes significant, more so than the 10-day OSS at that point.
Okay. So, you know, I would like to see in the future
Yeah, I agree.
a little bit more on that, you know?
I agree.
You have to take that a little bit more serious.
I agree. Actually, it's under drug and alcohol, too.
Possession of weapons is no second or third offense?
Again, the expulsion hearing becomes a significant piece to that.
Okay, but that should be on there, though, because the kids, nobody knows that, and that could be a lawsuit for us. Well, that's not stated, how can you expel me?
What pages?
Forty-three? Forty-three. We should have that in writing.
Is that now part of the line where it becomes a law enforcement issue?
Yes, it does.
Well, it really, it doesn't say that, though. Then it should say law enforcement.
The expulsion hearing rules. It's a state law. We wouldn't have a second and third offense on this, because a child would not go back in the schools.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But the other one, you're absolutely right about.
That explains it, you know, because I had no idea reading that, I was like, there's no second or third, you know?
But the other one, you're absolutely right about.
Okay. All right.
Okay. The handbooks go into the, to the state, I believe, and so if anyone, if everyone's all right with this, we will approve this tonight, even though we had these, we'll approve it with the, the changes are already in it. They've been changed. Are you comfortable with that, Mrs. Burns?
I'm comfortable as long as the changes are recognized and, and, yeah.
Okay. So, could we entertain a motion to accept the high school handbook as presented? Mr. Mullis?
Make a motion to accept the high school handbook as presented.
Can you say the date, just because we have to send in the minutes? 2013?
2013, 2014.
Thank you.
High school handbook.
With changes.
With the changes that were talked about.
Second, Mrs. Carol? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Linda?
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Less changes in the middle school.
I have a question.
Oh, no questions. All right, Ms. McMiniman, thank you very much for joining us. Welcome back.
Thank you. I can review some of the language changes and the date updates. That's pretty much where the changes were. I do apologize, the draft copies that you now have are black and white, although the memo is in color, and we just had a timing issue of getting the updated ones to you with our color printers. So, you can see the changes that we had made originally, and then after we submitted the draft and some corrections and typos were noticed, we fixed those as well. So, we certainly updated all of our lunch prices, our dates for our calendars, and open house dates, and parent conference teacher dates. We also upgraded, I'm sorry, updated all the health policy language according to Mrs. Crowe and her recommendations as well. Down below, we added and updated our staff members. One of the changes that you might want to note, I believe it's on page seven when we talk about the school and district team, while Ms. Peters is obviously working here as the principal, Paul Monaco, our district-wide STEM coordinator, is going to oversee the math department six through eight. So, we just made note of that, so parents can know who to speak with with curriculum issues with regard to the math. Also, we updated Tracy Casson as our summer school director, and I must say, she did a wonderful job this summer, working at the summer school and overseeing all of the programs, and interacting with the parents, and she did, it was great to work with her. So, those are the basic changes. Most of them were dates, price upgrades, language from the health department, and our schedules for our dates for our MCAS in the spring, and our eighth grade activities in the spring, and those types of items.
Easy one. It wasn't easy. Does anyone have any questions on this one? This is a self-corrected for sure. Excellent. All right, could we entertain a motion to accept the Wilmington Middle School Student Parent Handbook for 2013, 2014? Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion to accept the middle school handbook, 2013, 2014.
Second, Mrs. Carol? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mrs. McMiniman. We have, we've come to the end of our packet here. Excellent. Public comments. Do you have any public comments tonight? Tonight, thank you. Other reports, subcommittee reports. We'll start again.
Mrs. Burns has some correspondence.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
I just want to update you all on the new high school. If you haven't heard, we are in the process of putting up the steel structure, and we're three weeks ahead of time. So, we're very excited about that. Mark your calendars for September 12th. It's a Thursday evening. We will be rededicating the high school field. It will be a home game, first home game against Winchester.
How wonderful.
It's unusual, we're doing a Thursday night football game because of Jewish holiday.
Seven? What time?
Well, the freshman game is earlier, but the
Oh, will it be at the freshman, or no?
There's, I'll get the times out to you, but the high school game is at seven. And there's an error on your agenda, it's the 11th, not the 12th for the next meeting.
All right.
Oh, you better correct it.
Yeah, I think she's had one corrected.
So, we're really making progress with the high school, and within the next few days, the last piece of steel on facing this building will have a message to the students on it from Gilbein. They've really done an outstanding job of communicating with us and working well with us. In fact, they actually arrived at our doorstep yesterday with six huge boxes of pastries for the high school staff to thank them for any inconvenience there. And Mr. Harrison is working with the town public buildings department and the high school construction committee to have some sort of lighting on the walkway to the field because of a different entrance we'll be entering from where the gymnasium used to be. So, there's a long pathway down. So, if you've been to a football game, where the football team comes in the right-hand side, that will be the entrance until the high school's finished. Also, the foundations being poured for the concession slash toilet facility, that's Shoshin Tech, will be, students will be building for us.
Excellent.
All good things. Thank you.
Excellent. And I'd just like to bring up the, under our subcommittee assignments, that, just to refresh our minds, and one of the ones at the end, school committee negotiations subcommittee with educational systems, that's completed, because we have that contract. So, we'll eliminate that one.
And we'll have a student rep for the next meeting.
Oh, okay, student rep will be coming, good. And under the policy subcommittee, maybe Mrs. Burns, you could give the superintendent a call, because there's a couple that, by, through state, they have to, have to work on them, and that would be Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Carol, and Mrs. Bonner. And And Mrs. Bonnich will be able to make an agenda for that. It came up at the end of last year, we were talking about possibly going down to one meeting a night and it was just put out there, but we never discussed it and my feeling is, it's always worked that if we were coming up to a meeting, that there was really nothing that we, was imperative, that we just left out that meeting. And for now, with everything going on this year, that's going to be going on, teachers have a lot to contend with, as does the administration. And so I think we need to have our meeting. So we will stay on our same schedule of the second and fourth Thursday. And if it comes to the fact that the superintendent says, you know, we don't need to, there's nothing right now, we'll move on to something, we'll skip that meeting. Okay, if that works for everybody.
Thanks.
Wednesday, second, third Wednesday?
Fourth Wednesday.
Let's start again. Second and fourth Wednesday. We will be here. We'll see. Okay, so correspondence.
This is a letter from Elizabeth Warren to MJ. Dear MJ, thank you for contacting me about gun violence. Like millions of people across the country, I was heartbroken by the tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary School last December. I do not know how to explain the deaths of twenty innocent children or why six heroic teachers had to make the ultimate sacrifice for their students. Our communities have demanded action to curb gun violence, but the Senate has continued to fall short. When faced with the chance to vote for a bipartisan compromise to ensure that universal background checks prevent dangerous people from purchasing guns, something that ninety percent of Americans support, a minority of U.S. senators blocked reform. We must do better. Tragically, the shooting in Newtown was not an isolated incident. Research by the Children's Defense Fund shows that on average nearly nine thousand, nearly nine children and teenagers die every day from gun violence, thousands every year and tens of thousands every decade. If nine children were dying of a mysterious illness every day, our country would do everything in its power to stop it. We must do the same for gun violence. This fight is not over. I voted in favor of measures to improve background checks for gun purchases, increase penalties for gun trafficking, limit the size of ammunition magazines, and reauthorize the expired ban on military-style assault weapons. I will continue to support efforts to pass a comprehensive set of reforms to reduce gun violence. There is no single solution for ending gun violence, but we must do better. We must honor the memory of those that have, we have lost to gun violence and protect our children and families from these terrible tragedies. I will keep your thoughts in mind as I continue to look for other steps we can take. I believe that it is my responsibility as a United States Senator and as a mother and a grandmother to reduce gun violence. Sincerely, Elizabeth Warren, United States Senator.
Good work, MJ.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Excellent. All right, and so our next, oh, okay. This should be September eleventh.
Eleven, yes.
Okay, so we'll meet again on September eleventh. Everyone have a good two weeks. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Quick.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Mrs. Bonnich, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.